Welcome, everybody. I'd like to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any injustice or law.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all brave men and women fighting all over the world for democracy and freedom. Also, prayer for the people who have lost their lives in California. Thank you.
Okay, tonight we have a public hearing on the Charter Communication Agreement on local law of the year 2018 to amend Section 155, there's 32 dot 2 of the town code solar energy, a new at-grade pedestrian railroad crossing at Dock Road. Right now, I'd like to have Kevin Egan come that represents Charter. If there's any questions that the board has or the audience. Kevin, could you set up? So, basically, it's the same thing we did 10 years ago, a 10-year agreement. Also, we changed a few things.
We made modifications to the franchise, the franchise agreement calls for a 5 percent franchise fee, and it was paid annually, so we did make modifications so that the town would receive the monies on a quarterly basis versus annually. And we also made a modification to the, to make sure that we were maximizing the gross revenues definition. So, we made sure that it was the broadest definition in terms of the way the gross revenues were looked and the way the 5 percent was calculated.
I think the only thing left was for the Spectrum TV for the town, right? The facilities?
Yes. I, that's something I can sit down with you and just go through the list and make sure we have it accurately.
Okay. I think I know the highway department and the water department. Do you know any of this Tony? Tony doesn't have.
He has internet. He only has, he only has internet, but no TV.
Right.
The highway department and the, and the water department do have it. They have the cable. They have cable in here, and we have cable upstairs.
Yeah, we pay for the cable. This is just for TV, free TV.
Hold on, tell me.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah. TV.
Sorry.
Okay, so that was the highway department?
So, highway department.
Court.
The water department, they're in the same building.
1650.
1650, the court, and then, oh, you wanted two, Scott?
And the town.
And then upstairs has it, and Chris Wilco's office has it.
Not in the topic.
Do we have one in the office for the?
They have it, but they pay for it, which is actually a town building, so technically...
It would be limited to, it's actually one basic outlet and equipment per town building. So, it's a municipally-owned building, so if the building was all...
Well, I mean, it is municipal.
Okay.
It is a municipal building for the next month.
And it would be a standard drop if there's already service there. We can, we can look at that one, too.
Yep.
Okay.
So, the board's reviewed the franchise.
Mm-hmm.
And with those changes, I'd like a motion to give permission to the supervisor to sign the agreement.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None being said, motion carried. Thank you. Where'd you come from, Albany?
Uh, yes, I did.
Huh, five minutes. See? I appreciate it, but we... Yeah, they're closed now, but unfortunately. Thank you, Kevin. Okay, it's also a public hearing on local law of the year of 2018 to amend Section 155, there's 32 dot 2 of the town code solar energy. This is to op out of the pilot program. So, right now, our code doesn't have that. So, with the new solar system that's going on the Turnpike, any improvements to that land has to go through a pilot. And we're gonna start working on that with Next Amp. So, any, any comments on that, on the solar code change? Okay. And then, the next one is a new at-grade pedestrian railroad crossing at Dock Road. So, it's a process that we're told that we have to go through with the DOT. And the process is to notify CSX that we're having this public hearing on the crossing, on grade crossing that we have, and also a new one. So, it deals with railroad law 90 and 91, I believe, or 91 and 92. So, that being said, I did receive a letter from CSX stating that they wouldn't be able to attend. So, anybody have any...
That doesn't delay anything, right?
No. What, what it does now is we go to the commissioner and, from DOT, and we have a judicial, like, they listen to our side, listen to CSX, and then they make their decision on that.
Okay.
It's completely ripped out now, by the way, too. They've been putting the railroad ties in.
Yeah, they started working it.
So, it's completely gone.
Yeah.
Completely.
So, what was that on? They've...
They, they said that they were gonna, because they had ripped it out in April.
Yeah.
We had, we had a bunch of, we had the county, county car 56 get a hold of them, because we, we couldn't respond to an emergency across the tracks that came out. So, they came in and put in some ballast.
Yep.
Just to make it basically walkable.
Right.
They've removed that. They probably started that last week. What they said was when they put the railroad ties in, the new wooden ties underneath both tracks, they were gonna reinstall the crossing as it was.
Yep.
So, as of today, it's still all ripped out, but they are replacing the ties.
Well, they said November they would fix it all, so.
Yeah, they're, they're in the process.
They didn't say what year, but they said November.
A number of years ago, someone told me Santa was real.
Yeah.
When I talked to somebody down there from CSX, the first thing is the process is they replace the railroad ties, and then they put the new railing in, and hopefully they'll get to that. I don't know if they're gonna get to the baluster, which we've been asking for the last 15 years, but...
What's that? Oh.
By the fence.
They're supposed to grade that back and...
They're supposed to.
Keep an eye on them.
Okay. So, for the record, I'd just like to read CSX's letter and says, Mr. Lanzetta CX, "CSX is receipt of the public hearing notice scheduled for November 12, 2018. Unfortunately, CSXT is unable, unable to have a representative attend the hearing, but provides the attached letter to confirm our position to the proposed crossing. If you have any question, please feel free to reach out to us." So, naturally, we knew that they were gonna deny us, so now it goes to the other process. James, do you have a question? Would you like to come up and step up? Please? I'm sure it has to do something with the public hearings.
James, can I follow? I just wanted to clarify. You, it says that this is a public hearing on the new at-grade crossing. You also mentioned the existing crossing. So, I wanted to clarify that this is only for the new crossing, or is this for, for both? And the second quest, question is, the new crossing that's being proposed, is that to the north or south of the existing crossing?
The new crossing is to the south, but the proposal for the resolution is for the both, the one that exists, and also the one that we're proposing, a new crossing, on grade crossing, and which is to the south about 100 feet.
Okay.
From the old one.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I look forward to seeing this done sometime in the future.
Yeah, we are, too, James. We are, too. So, I need a motion to close the public hearing on these three items, the Charter Communication Agreement, the code to the solar energy, and also the at-grade pedestrian railroad crossing.
All motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passed. Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Moving, motion to approve minutes from the October 22nd, 2018 Town Board Meeting.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None being said, motion carried. Motion to approve minutes from the October 22nd, 2018 Public Hearing Meeting.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Authorized payment of bills for $172,280.65. Pay the bills?
Make a motion, pay the bills.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None being said, motion carried. Comments on the agenda? None being... Okay. Presentation. Scott? Scott Wolsey from Mobile Life.
Good evening. Can you hear me if I don't use the microphone in the back? Fine? Yes? Okay. Again, my name's Scott Webster. The President, CEO of Mobile Life Support Services. As many of you know, Mobile Life is the primary ambulance for the town of Marlboro, and we've been serving as such for a good number of years now. We basically filled in a little bit back when you had the town Marlboro Volunteer Ambulance Corps. It gradually took over more and more time as their membership declined to the point where it was felt by the board to have us step in, and since that time, we've been doing it. A little background about Mobile Life, the 1:30 second commercial. We've been in existence since 1981. We were founded by Ricky Gale Metzger in the city of Newburgh.
Scott?
Yes?
You know what's gonna happen when we air it? They're not gonna hear you, so if you could get closer to the...
You can take the microphone out.
Take it right out and sing us a song or something. Yeah, there you go.
Sorry about that.
That's, it's okay.
Again, Mobile Life's been existence since 1981. Since that time, we've grown exponentially. We currently are operating out of 26 stations in four counties. We have 450 staff, paramedics, EMTs, dispatchers, administrator types like me, educators, a whole bunch of things, different to other positions. In 2017, we responded to 102,000 calls. If this is a normal Monday, probably be a little shorter because of the holiday, but we'll probably do about 300 calls system-wide today. And that includes the city of Poughkeepsie, city of Kingston, city of Middletown, city of Newburgh, as well as other, many other municipalities, both as a primary role, like we do here in Marlboro, where we are the ambulance, as well as many other communities, where we back up their local volunteers who provide care at the basic life support level. But we come in with our advanced life support paramedics to assist them, to administer medications, do all the procedures they're not able to do because of certification. So, we're a busy bunch. What I wanted to do tonight is talk a little bit about the performance over the last year, of what we've done here in the town, give a little background, and talk about some stuff in the future and where else we're going. Within the town of Marlboro, that's all the calls in both fire districts. For the period of September 1st, 2017, through August 31st, 2018, we use a full-year window. That way, it takes out any seasonality. We did 966 overall responses. You see some of the information on the board. 660 of them were 911 emergencies. Means that was a light and siren response. That was, it could be anything dispatched from Olster County 911 Center. It could be a heart attack. It could be a car accident. It could be difficulty breathing, seizures, overdose, any number of things. We also did 265, what we call 911 alphas. And basically, what that is, if somebody dialed 911 asking for help, an ambulance was deemed necessary. However, it doesn't reach the criteria of lights and sirens, meaning they called for a fairly minor emergency, whether it be a sprained wrist, whether it be somebody with a fever, whether it be general weakness or something like that. Again, when the phone is answered at 911 in county, they're asking a whole series of questions, and they make their determination of what we're going to. If ever we're going to an unknown emergency, nobody knows what's going on, it's treated as a light and siren emergency until proven otherwise. Somebody gets on the scene and determines it's not, then we turn it. It's a public safety issue. Protects my paramedics and EMTs, the general public, and also the patient, because we can't help anybody if we don't get there safely. So, that's what we also did. We did numerous standbys, whether it be at the request of some of the fire services. They're operating a structural fire. They'll have one of our ambulances stand by just in case anyone needs EMS services at the scene, as well as numerous other community service standbys. That could be everything from the fire parade. It could be other events you have down at the park, whatever it may be, just so we're making a public presence to that. I think also the football games are included in these numbers as far as standbys for those as well. And actually, our tactical division actually had one mission in your township between that time period. We have about 15 paramedics who are specially trained. They're called tactical paramedics. They're trained along with the police services how to operate in what we call the warm zone, meaning these are paramedics that are equipped with ballistic vests, helmets. They're trained how to operate with that. Very often, we're asked to respond with the Police Special Services Division or SWAT team, for lack of a better term. Whether it be for middle-of-the-night warrants, where they're going to execute a warrant, it can be deemed high risk, one of our specially-trained paramedics accompanies them for everyone's safety, as well as if there's a call that you have something like a barricaded subject or something along those lines, we also respond. We operate with three, actually, four different police entities where our paramedics are automatically dispatched along with them. The one thing I do want to add, the other thing that we're initiating company-wide right now, we just started it, is a program called Stop the Bleed. The unfortunate, and numerous episodes of multiple shootings. A lot of science has gone into the, how essential it is in the early stages if somebody does suffer a significant gunshot, one of these multiples of shootings, how quickly to get in there and have somebody stop the bleed, and how that saves lives led to that. So, we're in the process right now of some of our specially-trained paramedics are going out and doing training sessions for school personnel, municipal personnel. Whoever is really interested in one of those classes, get 20 or 30 people together, and we'll teach them the basics of, you know, how to hold the fort, how to, you know, stop somebody from possibly bleeding out until the trained professionals can, can get to them in time. And it's been, and that type of thing has been deemed saving a whole lot of lives. Mobile Life has been on the contract with the town for, again, quite a period, as I mentioned before. And what our contract entails, and has entailed for numerous years now, is we have a staffed paramedic ambulance. That's one New York State certified paramedic and one New York State certified EMT, with a fully-equipped ambulance based within the town from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM at night. Okay? So, any emergencies that happen during that period, that's where we're coming from. In those other hours, from 10:01 PM till 6:59 AM, the ambulance is coming from one of our surrounding stations in one of your, your neighboring communities, either from Lloyd, where we have a station right at the main firehouse, or from our south operations, either from Cromer Valley Firehouse, or from our, one of our main stations in Newburgh. Basically, that was deemed it's, it's a budgetary concern. Just to give you a quick idea for, to run a paramedic ambulance service, if we were to do it and not send out any bills whatsoever, it operates, costs about $90 per hour to operate a paramedic unit. Times that by 24 hours, times that by 365 days, you're talking about a whole lot of money. Now, we can bill for our services to reduce that expense to the municipality, and that's what we do here in Marlboro, just to give you an idea where it goes. And how did we get from the 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM idea? We basically looked, if you look up right there, that's the day of week, hour of day, 0 through 23, 23 being 11:00 PM, 22 being 10:00 PM, and so on, using military time type thing, and what were your busiest hours? Okay? How to get the biggest bang for the buck. And that's what we end up doing. What we also found is in those off-hours, even though we're coming from further, that's the best time to travel on the roads going up and down from those stations. Anybody's traveled on 9W between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM knows it's pretty easy to get back and forth. Just the opposite happens during your busy hours, either morning commute or the afternoon commute. And even nowadays, even in the middle of the afternoon, it's pretty hard to do. So, having that unit a little bit closer is in there. So, it gives you a little bit of idea of the breakout, and that's the time of day all those calls occurred. One of the other things we found is, and this is something that's on the rise, system-wide, the area town kind of jumped quite a bit of all the calls we did, what we're finding is of the 925 dispatches, 301 of those patients we went to didn't go anywhere, meaning they didn't go to a hospital. We went to the scene, either assessed, maybe treated the patient, and the patient opted not to go to the hospital. Whether they went by their own later, or they followed up with their own doctor, we're not quite sure, but they didn't go by ambulance to the hospital. That's, that's, that's up quite a bit than it used to be. And again, it's something we're seeing nationwide, and I think part of that problem is nowadays, unfortunately, with some of the insurance problems people have, they have, they have less access to primary care physicians, and it's a matter of they don't know what to do. Or they do call their doctor's office, and if you call after hours, what does the answering machine message say? What's the first sentence? Call 911. And you know what? They do. And we go, and we, again, assess and do that. But the one thing that's pertinent in, in those 301 calls, that 32% of the calls, we don't bill if we don't transport. The way reimbursement goes, whether it be Medicare, Medicaid, all the insure, the private insurances, we only get reimbursed if we transport them to a hospital. So, that, that's a one, a little bit of an issue we've been dealing with. Just to give you an idea of the type of calls we're getting dispatched on, on the right-hand side of the column, again, injuries from falls is the most common, and again, it's not unusual, particularly if you have a high percentage of elderly in your, in your township. Motor vehicle accidents generate a lot of calls, difficulty breathing, psychiatric emergency, and all that type of thing. Chest pain quite a bit as well, as well as traumas and so on and so forth. Pretty much across the board, we have seen increases in both overdoses and also psychological emergencies. Again, that's not just enough for the town. That's across our system wide. We're getting a lot more calls along those lines. So, something we're dealing with, again, for informational purposes. The other thing I want to go over is, what this is, is it's actually a whole year's worth of data. It goes across the, by date and by hour of the day, and that's how many calls in that particular day we got dispatched. And if you see the number one, that means we got one call in that hour. If you see the number two, that means we got two calls dispatched within that same hour. And if you go through the whole thing, basically, 75 times during the year, we had two calls dispatched in the same hour. 11 times, three units, and actually, twice during the year, we had four calls going on at the same time. Now, understand, that could be the same incident, meaning I know there were some incidents where we had three ambulances on the scene. I think one we even had, well, four were, four were at the scene. So, the, one of those four call incidents, that was one incident, but we needed four ambulances to get there. It just gives you an idea of the type of volume we get, and that'll speak to some of the other things when I go over to response times here, but just gives you an idea of the impact of what we do. This basically goes over response times, and we call it by fractiles, what we're doing. The one all the way to the left, that's all calls within the town, and it basically shows the minutes in, by response time, the number of times it happened, and what kind of percentage is that. You can see the highlighted one. Again, I'm looking at the, the column on the far left. If you go down to, it's line 13, but it's at the six-minute mark. Overall, for the township, we're, we're, the average response time, meaning 50% of the time, we're getting there in six minutes. Another number we always look at, just as a, as a measurement, is at what point are we at 90%, reliable response time, and that for a town, the town is currently at 13 minutes. I'd like that number to be under 10. It's, it's just very difficult, particularly when we're doing those after-hours coming from distance. I don't see that ever really getting there. And if we break it down to more graphs, the center graph is the off-hours, the number of calls, 132. Again, 911 calls we were dispatched. The average response time at that point is, that 12 minutes, with a reliable at 20. And then, during our staffed hours, again, six minutes at 58%, and then the reliable at 11 minutes. So, it gives you a little bit of an idea of what's going on in, in response time-wise. Again, that's all calls all in there. Some, you see some high numbers in there. Again, that incident where we had four ambulances on there, the first one might have got there right away within that five minutes. The second one may have taken nine. The third would have taken more, and so on. And it also incorporates, in that period, that full year period, we're looking at, what was the worst weather day we had, and which, where were the calls in that day. It's gonna include all kind of responses, and freezing ice and, and frozen precipitation and, and trojan through the snow. So, that's gonna occur, and it's also gonna occur those other times. Again, although there was only two times we had four ambulances, there were 75 times where we had two calls within the same hour. And if the ambulance that's dedicated to the town is doing a call, that ambulance, again, is coming from one of the other surrounding townships, perhaps logging through that traffic as we, as we talk to, then you're depending on your Mobile Life units that are being supported by your neighbors at that point, just as sometimes you guys help them out. Is any questions on the, I know I'm throwing a whole lot of data on you. Just any questions on that stuff so far? Yes?
I'm just curious if I've gotten calls to go to Baxter as opposed to...
It's now called Mid-Hudson Regional. I make that mistake all the time, too. For the most part, the paramedics don't direct patients one way or the other. The only time when we step in is when our protocols dictate that. If the patient has an illness or injury that suggests they should go to one location versus another. For instance, some places are cardiac-related. Some places are trauma centers, that type of thing. There's some people, places that are psychiatric emergency-receiving facilities. So, a lot of that, but I would say, majority, I would say 85% of the time, it's the patients telling us where they want to go. I think, when I went back to transit, I think we even took one patient from here to Northern Duchess. It's, I, I, I can't speak specifically on patient-type stuff, but in general, I would say that's probably somebody who had either a procedure done there. They may have been going to the OB services at that hospital, because that's where they prefer. It could be any number of things, but for the most part, it's, that's where the patient wants to go. We have no affiliations with any hospitals directly.
And a second question. So, how many ambulances are actually here of the...
One, one, yeah. Yeah. Again, Mobile Life on a given day, a typical Monday like today, we had 48 staffed ambulances on the road. So, we have ambulances all over the place, and it's not unusual to see them going up and down Route 9W. Even though it may not be yours doing that call, they may have transported somebody from south to north, and north to south, that type of thing. And what happens is, in our system, when we get busy, our dispatchers can proactively move ambulances if they see that. For example, if your ambulance went on a call, and the town of Lloyd ambulances were all tied on calls, they're gonna start proactively moving ambulances to do that. So, if we have several that are available, let's say in our Poughkeepsie area, they will move one across the river to help. So, it's not just reacting to the call, it's trying to be proactive to that call as well. Any, yes?
What is the radius of service for the Marlboro-based ambulance, and it doesn't include areas that are not...
Yes, at times. It, it stays within the town. The only difference being is there are times we will, you'll see, if you know where our base is, the old red building there, there are times you'll see it in the Stewart parking lot. And that basically is our, is our dispatchers proactively moving units. They're seeing, for instance, Lloyd may be getting short. They're gonna put that ambulance in between the two and leave it staffed there. Does a couple of things. If they're, if they're sitting in the ambulance, it reduces the out-of-shoot time by about a minute or two, so they can actually get further. So, it looks like they're further away from the, like, Western Avenue and the main part of the village, but the fact that they're sitting in an ambulance, the ambulance is running, it really doesn't change their response time. So, what happens is if they have to run up, they'll, if Lloyd all of a sudden gets N-plus-one number of calls, meaning they have two ambulances and they have two calls, and they get a third, we'll send that up there and then backfill from the south, or vice versa. When we look at the, the calls in the town that we have done, even during the contracted hours, the contracted ambulance only did about 88% of the calls. The rest were because it's a second call, or we needed two at the scene, or that first ambulance was already on a call, and they were down in St. Luke's on their way back when another call came in. That's also some of those response times we see there. Yes, sir?
I just want to say, you see, our transportation on a three-year cycle counts all of the state roads, so that if you want to get a really good picture of traffic, any hour of the day, you can go online, look at the traffic viewer, and look at a specific road and get an idea of when the traffic is, is beating. They don't always have it during the weekends, but they almost always have it during the week. I certainly recommend... I certainly recommend that as part of your analysis when you talk to different towns, to take a look at those numbers, particularly us because we're very dependent on Route 9W to get anywhere, and I think that that would be helpful information for you to have.
It's funny, because some of the gentlemen at the diocese here will know that I'm a data geek. I love data, stuff like that. Rather than just looking at the volume, sometimes that's misleading, because if we're on the emergency mode, lights and sirens, we can go around some of that traffic, depending on the nature of the road, some places that's easier than others. The one thing we do look at by hour of day is the response time. So we know what's the response time during the busiest hours, and which direction that flow is going, which is the better direction for the ambulance to come, based on which way is the primary traffic flow going. So we actually do factor a lot of that stuff in.
In most cases, they do that traffic via direction. Also, another helpful thing is New York 511, which will actually show where there has been congestion on various roads.
Yeah, yeah. We love data, and it does, you'd be amazed the amount of drilling down we go into to try to set up our system, and how to predict exactly what it's, you know, going to cost to run, and what's its performance going to be. The one thing I'm always proud of, when we go into a new town, and it kind of holds up here, when we first came in here, we did our projections as far as response times were going to be, even before we started doing calls, it turned out to be very accurate. So we're kind of proud of the amount of data drilling we do, and what we do into that. The one thing, though, it's an interesting bit, is more than response times, although that's what gets everybody's attention, and unfortunately, that's what makes a lot of negative headlines in the general public. What's being found out through scientific study through what we do is, there's only a very, very small amount of the calls we do where the difference between a five-minute response time and a nine-minute response time makes any difference at all. It's going to be those calls where somebody's not breathing, they're harder stopped, they have uncontrolled bleeding, or their airway is occluded. And one of the great things is, locally, your police department is also trained in first response. They have defibrillators, they, you know, can give Narcan, there's a whole lot of things they can do. So having that first response in your town is great. What I would argue is, you want to get a good idea of how well your paramedic ambulance is doing. It's, you know, we always present a response time because that's always where the public interest is going. But I would argue, if you were having chest pain right now because of a heart attack, but you're still awake and still breathing, and your heart hadn't stopped, the bigger influence is going to be, how quickly my paramedics identify whether you're actually having a myocardial infarction by a 12 lead, whether they give you aspirin, whether they start an IV on you and do other things for you, and then take you to the right facility. That will far greatly change your outcome, as opposed to five minutes versus nine or 12 minutes. So there's a lot of drill down, and that's, I just use that one example, but there are many, many, many examples like that, that actually has a bigger influence on what we do. But response time is response time, yes, I can't argue. There's about 5% of the calls where those, you know, tick-tock the minutes are going by, but the fact that, again, that your police department is very proactive about doing first response also makes a big difference.
Okay, thank you.
Last thing I'll talk about is just the contract we put in front of you. We just finished up a two-year contract, and Mobile Life has put in draft form. Did you get, I sent that to you, did you get it?
You sent it today?
No, I sent it like two weeks ago. I'll send it again. It's basically a renewal of the contract, the stipulations are basically the same, but Mobile Life Support is asking for a 2% increase over what we had for 17 and 18. For 19 and 20, it's a 2% increase for that, just because we've had increased expenses, payroll, insurances, the whole regimen in a row. So the town subsidy will go up by 2%, so pending approval, we keep going from there.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. How are you?
Good evening, and I'm fine. Hopefully you all are, too. I'm here on behalf of the Thousand Book Program. That's a partnership of the Marlborough Faculty Association, the local libraries, our local businesses, and service organizations, and what it is, is a program whereby parents and families of three- to six-year-old children can read a thousand books by going to the libraries and taking out these book packs. And if you do it 100 times, there's 10 books in each pack, you've read a thousand books. So it's been going on for about 10 years. It's an absolutely great program. We honor children, families who have finished reading by bringing them to a Board of Education meeting, they're given a special certificate, they're getting recognition. It's a nice program. And what we would like to do is, we're having an event at the Milton Train Station. We're very happy that we have the Milton Train Station, and we'd like to kind of showcase it a little bit. So both of our libraries will be involved, and the local preschools will also be involved in that they will have stations, if you will, at different tables in the train station. There'll be books and crafts that go with them. We'll have a conductor that will go around, and you'll be given a ticket when you come in with each of the local stations on it, and as you finish that station, the conductor will click your ticket, much in the same way that they do on Polar Express. Now, this is for children of, parents and families of three- to six-year-old children, so we can't actually show the Polar Express, it's too high-level for the really little kids. But that's what it'll be, and we also have refreshments, we'll have music, we'll have two local authors that actually Linda Lapola and Jody Bolson have actually authored books for three- to six-year-olds, they'll be there. And what we would like to do, and we also have support, Sawyer Bank, Unico, a few of the other local organizations have given us donations to cover the cost of flyers and refreshments and things like that, and possibly music, but we would like to have the fee waived for renting the train station. It's a $300 fee. I know, I know. So if you could do that, it would be absolutely great, because it is a lot of different community.
You know what date that is?
Yes, it's December 6th, from 10 o'clock in the morning till 2:00 in the afternoon. And I do have some flyers. These are our preliminary flyers, they're for different organizations. Did I say the 6th? I'm so sorry, I meant to say the 8th. That's a Saturday. Thank you, Rosemary.
Okay, I do it all the time.
That's why we need Rosemary, we really do. Right. So, yeah.
So do you have this in JPG or anything electronic?
What we've done is, this is the original flyer, the new flyer will be coming out on the 15th, and yes, I do have it in the JPG, so I could send that to you.
I would just suggest that you give it to Danielle or...
Sure.
At the clerk's office, and so we can put it on our website.
Oh, that would be great.
Town website.
Yeah, yeah. There's no admission, there's no fees, it's just, you know, for our community, so.
So I need a motion to waive.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you all so much.
A poll.
You have a good holiday.
Thank you.
You, too.
Thank you for doing this, appreciate it.
I love it.
Thank you.
Okay. Going right to the report of departments and boards. First up is the supervisor's report. As mentioned at the previous in the notes, was almost there with the two contracts from DASNY for the 9W Quarter Sewer, Phase 1 and Phase 2. We did receive those contracts, especially Phase 1, we're interested in going up 9W up to Chestnut Petroleum, Dunkin' Donuts. So Dennis Larrius, our engineer, has been working on that, and so now he could actually start to get paid because we have the contract. The other thing I like, before I do my report, is I'd like to thank Dave Polian and Steve Andencheck for putting on a great party for the veterans at the weeds. That was really great, really appreciate it. Met with Brett Bogan from Tampa Tower in regards to a cell tower sitting at the Highway Department. This is at the 1650 site, it's on the south side, it's property that the town purchased from the Hepworts a couple of years ago. And so Tarpon Tower, they actually just build a tower and then lease it to the provider. So the first provider would be probably Verizon, I'm told. And then after that, other providers could be put on the same tower. Attended Ulster County Transportation Council meeting in Rosendale, attended Mid-Hudson Water Infrastructure Funding Event with Councilman Baker at Maris College. Met with representatives of St. Mary's and Councilman Baker to discuss Route 9W parking lot. Councilman Baker had sent an email discussing that meeting to the board. We're waiting for them to reply to see what the diocese would wish and what Father Tom would like. Long process. Met with Milton Train Station Park Engineer, Highway Superintendent Gail Appeler, and representatives of the Milton Train Station Foundation to look at engineering for placement of pavers at the train station. So basically, just the area of the train station up to the road would be pavers. We have $10,000 left over from Senator Larkin's grant, so we want to utilize that, but we need a engineering spec on grades and stuff like that. We did get that, so now that's in the hands of the Train Station Committee, and I think they're going along with it. So they would pay for that, I think it's around $6,000, $7,000. Attended trunk-a-treat at the elementary school, was a great success, big lines, around 500 little guys, had a great time there. I'd like to thank Joe Wiles and Officer Fulton for helping out on that, it was just a great event. The weather cooperated, and it was good. And also, there was a lot of things happening in Marlborough, Sheila Manisi meeting me in Marlborough, had something going on, and later on that week was the Milton Fire Department had a little trunk-a-treat down in Milton, which was really great. Attended with Councilman Corcoran and Chief Kukosa, a meeting with the PBA. That along with Father Tom has taken some time. Met with Councilman Baker and Central Hudson Representative Jessica Cazerta to discuss potential site at Central Hudson Project. Very, very encouraging, I haven't heard anything about the sale of the property. Once we get confirmation on that, I think we have some work to do. Met with Councilman Baker and Mike Cacerio from Netcamp to discuss potential for solar panels at the train station, transfer station. Howard, you want to say a little something, because you took them up there, and it looked positive to me, so finally, maybe we'll get something up there.
Yeah, Netcamp is a company, it's about the fifth one we've spoken to, about solar facility up at the transfer station landfill, basically, and they are the most positive so far. They have experience in putting these on landfills. Yes, he and I went up there, the development manager, they build these structures and they operate them for towns, and he liked the site so far, so, so far, so good. There's some questions we have to, and some information we have to supply to them to take the next step, but so far, it's been very positive, and this would be, I have a couple of options of how this would pan out, but we're discussing these things with them, and seems very positive so far.
Is this the same company that's doing the water?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And the name sounded familiar, as well.
It's the same, Netcamp.
From Boston, they're from Boston, and...
Same gentleman.
Because if they're in the area doing that project, the cost to them is probably less since they're here.
Right. Right.
Thank you, Howard. Attended the Purple Heart Dinner in New Windsor. Once again, talked to Senator Larkin. That was a great event. Attended Marlborough Middle School Assembly given by the Brudicoff's community on forgiveness. That's another great event. Attended with Councilman Corcoran, the annual Veterans Day memorial service. Give a shout-out to Tom Schroeder for doing just a great job the other day, recognizing our veterans. Met with Jacob Repke, Eagle Scout candidate, about the horseshoe pits at the park. Evidently, evidently, everything is done there, so we could play horseshoes next year. Respectfully outlandish, said the supervisor. Going to the building, Inspector Thomas Corcoran, would you like to read that? Scott?
All right. Monthly report of October, Building Department. Certificate of occupancy, two. Stop work order, two. Request for information, 18. ZBA application, zero. Trailer park renewal, zero. Order remedy, 16. Building extensions, one. Complaints, 39. Fire inspections, 35. Burn permits, used, 19. Fire calls, one. Clothing bin renewals, zero. Total 40 building permits. Three one-family, six electrical generators, five furnace boiler, two demolition, five tank installation removal, one stove, wood stove pellet, one pool, hot tub, two shed, two roofs, one fireworks, one sign, two barns, three addition renovations, three decks or stairs, three carports, excuse me, two, and one solar panel. For estimated cost of $1,783,875. Certificate of occupancy, $300. Request for information, $1,800. Building extensions, $100. Building permits, $9,192.90. Fire inspections, $1,880. Burn permits, $90. Total monthly receipts, $13,362.90. Total mileage, 1,092 for 85 gallons. Thomas Corcoran.
Thank you, Scott.
From Chief Kukosa, activity summary for the month of October 2018. Personal injury, three. Fatal, fatal, zero. I don't usually need a microphone, but... Fatal, zero. Property damage, 18. Report not required, eight. Total of 29. Summons is issued, 92 vehicle in traffic, three parking. Complaint activity, total blotter entries, 393. Total arrests, 27. Total telephone calls, 1,701. And for the overtime, as the attached, full-time dispatchers overtime, four for $168. Part-time dispatchers, 24 for $523. Police mileage, 11,966. And that's it. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Chief Kukosa.
As you can see, most of the people aren't here because actually, it's a holiday, so... But not for us. We're hard-working guys, we get the big bucks.
Yeah.
So, Highway Superintendent.
Okay, monthly report for October 2018. Roads. We started installing 15-inch PVC pipe and catch basins on Old Indian Road from Route 9W to Hudson River Fruit Distributors. The ditch line was getting quite deep from erosion, and large rocks were breaking up the road edges and forcing cars into the ditch. We finished this around 10:21 due to a large amount of ledge rock that had to be hammered and the weather. We crack sealed numerous roads around the township in the first two weeks of the month. We milled out bad spots on Hampton and repaved these with hot asphalt. We milled out, repaved the end of Conte Terrace. On 10:10, we started reclaiming the east end of Old Indian Road from South Road to Indian Trail. It rained on 10:11, and we finished this on 10:12. We are waiting the blacktop crews to finish this. On 10:22, we started finishing Old Indian, Mohawk, Seneca, and Cherokee, and finished this on 10:23. We cleaned a ditch line on Highland Avenue, who replaced a 20-foot length of CMP pipe with a new one on Bingham Road. We also repaired ditch lines on Ridgegrass and Cross Road. Sidewalks, on 10:31, we finished forming and pouring three sections of sidewalk on Grand Street as Verizon had finished their repairs there. Trees and brush, on 10:25, we cut up and chipped two large pines that had fallen. We also cut and chipped a brush on Hillside and Penny Lane. We also cut and chipped up a leaning tree on Reservoir Road. On 10:18, we assisted the Water Department with a water main break on Dock Road in Milton. Fuel usage, gas, 351.284 gallons. Diesel, 638.079 gallons. Respectfully submitted, Gail Appeler.
Thank you, Alan.
Any questions?
Actually, yeah. The sidewalks are completed now for this year, but they'll continue next year on West Street to go all the way to the library. Just did the overall billing for the sidewalks that we completed in...
We are waiting the blacktop crews to finish this. On 10:22, we started finishing Old Indian, Mohawk, Seneca, and Cherokee and finished this on 10:23. We cleaned a ditch line on Highland Avenue. We replaced a 20-foot length of CMP pipe with a new one on Bingham Road. We also repaired ditch lines on Ridgegrass and Cross Road. Sidewalks. On 10:31, we finished forming and pouring three sections of sidewalk on Grand Street as Verizon had finished their repairs there. Trees and brush. On 10:25, we cut up and shipped two large pines that had fallen. We also cut and shipped a brush on Hillside and Penny Lane. We also cut and shipped up a leaning tree on Reservoir Road. On 10:18, we assisted the Water Department with a water main break on Dock Road in Milton. Fuel usage, gas 351.284 gallons, diesel 638.079 gallons. Respectfully submitted, Gail Appeler.
Thank you, Alan.
Any questions?
Actually, yeah. The sidewalks are completed now for this year, but they'll continue next year on West Street to go all the way to the library. Just did the overall billing for the sidewalks that we completed in Marlboro, and we're going to have ample enough money to do the rest of them, so. We spent about a little over $125,000. So the grant was from Frank Scartados, was for $250,000, so we're in good shape. So that worked out really good with the Highway Department doing all the excavation and local 174 guys doing all the pouring and the...
Yeah, I was trick or treating with my daughter on Halloween and I saw that that day they had poured the wet cement, and I said, "I hope this ends well." I don't think there was too much mischief on them though, so.
Should've put your name in there. So this is monthly report from Charlie Majayo, Water Superintendent. Water consumption, total 16.021 million gallons, that is daily usage of 516.8 compared to last month, 14.8 million gallons, that is daily usage of 494,000. Compared to a year ago, water consumption was 14.3 million for the month, which is a daily usage of 462,000. Summary for the month, water mains repaired, six-inch water main on Shanghai Hill and Dock Road. We also paved all the roads, cuts that were caused by breaks, hydrogens. We flushed hydrogens and had to repair two service lines, had to repair a service on Hudson Terrace and Sherman Drive, adjusted repair valve riser on Old Indian, Cherokee Lane, and Mohawk Drive because of repaving the road. Billing. Bills went out. If there are any problems, feel free to give us a call. Town park, we had a winterized of parks bathrooms. Also, we met with the NYCDEP to calibrate the pump house meters. Service line inspection, two, closing four, markouts 45. Gallons of gas, 300, gallons of diesel, zero, mileage for the month was 1,700. Thank you, Charlie. Next up is Town Clerk.
Town Clerk, monthly report, October 1st, 2018 to October 31st, 2018. Building department burn permits, one for $80, conservation 15 for $93.44. Dog licenses, 12 for 60. All combined is 160. I'm not going to go through the female, male. Water services, one for 175. Punch card permits, one for 30. Punch cards total 1,020. Marriage license, seven for $122.50. Building fees, building department, one for $8,895.99. Fire inspection, building department fees, $880. Accident reports, 14 for $70. Certified copies, three for $110. Dog warden, one for $110. FOI requests, foil requests, five for $50.75 for a subtotal of $340.75. Total local shares was $12,097.68. And total non-local revenues, $1,795.6. Charlie Corcoran.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. Okay, Waste Quality Management. Report of the Marlboro Waste Water Treatment Plant for October 2018. The average flow meter reading to the plant was 119 gallons per day. The design capacity is 175,000 gallons per day, so that's a use of 68% of capacity. The process is meeting all other speedies requirements. Lab results show that we removed 98% of BOD and 89% of suspended solids during the month. Milton Waste Water Treatment Plant, the average flow to Milton plant during October 2018 was 32,000 gallons per day. This is about 58% of design capacity, 55,000 gallons per day. We showed 99% of BOD and 99% of TSS removal. The process is working well, maintaining speedies requirements. Overall, both wastewater treatment plants are in good working order, but getting older. And we've heard this before. And we know it's getting older. We have to address this one, but it's getting by. The collection system is being monitored and maintained by Charlie Majayo and the Water Department. And if you need any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me, and that's Julian Falco.
Just a quick question, maybe you could ask Tony. He keeps... Oh, Julian, I'm sorry, I was running it now. Or maybe you can confer with Tony. But we keep hearing every month that it's getting old and it's getting old. Does he have any plan as far as remedying it? Like, when is too old going to be too old? Does this have a sunset date, just so we can kind of schedule this out? Because we can't keep saying, "Oh, that's going to be expensive," and then all of a sudden the train comes off the tracks, which happens a lot.
Actually, you know...
And then we're stuck, you know, going with a bond.
Yeah. Howard and I went down and met Tony and discussed all the major problems that we have down there. One of the major problems is the feed to the plant, which comes off of Dock Road.
Yeah, I think we talked about this last month, but I mean, I think it would be beneficial to this board and even the future boards, is if he had kind of, like, we understand the problems. Can he document the problem, give us a soft cost analysis?
We did ask him that.
Are we going to get it?
Yeah.
Because I just don't want this to, like, just keep going down the road, and then like three years from now, him be like, "Hey, thing's failing." Like, we're in trouble.
We understand that, Alan. We did ask him that. He just hasn't had time to do it right now.
I think part of that meeting we went to, Alan, that Al mentioned in his report at Marist, I think that's a source of potential money, but you're right, we need to know how much we're going to ask for.
And we did get to notice that there is money's available for improvements, so I mean, if he could effectively get us a plan, and we might look at that and be like, "Wow, we better get an engineer involved," and then we can go out and confer with an engineer, then have the power to go up for some of these federal funds for the Clean Water Act. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I understand. We talked about him going to ask Dennis Larrios about the SCREWJ Act and all these other things that he discussed that was, you know, was getting old and we had to replace, so I'll ask him tomorrow if he's had time to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I know he's been very busy, so I'll ask him again. But you're right, at least you'd be proactive. And dog control.
Andrew McKee, Dog Control Officer, October Monthly Report. We received total fourteen calls this month, including 21 calls to service from Marlboro Police Department, State Police, and Ulster County Sheriff. Responded to four active complaints and/or cases which are now closed or resolved. We currently have one opening case that have been addressed but are ongoing or unresolved. We impound one stray dog, which was redeemed by its owner. There were zero dog bites reported this month. We currently have zero dogs in the kennel. We have one case in the Marlboro Justice Court at this time. There have been numerous calls regarding bears and coyotes. I can't stress enough the importance of us interfering with the natural life cycles of these animals. Please do not leave your pets or children outside unattended and be alert when near trash receptacles, especially at night. That's from Andrew McKee, Dog Control Officer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Assessors Office to the Town Board from Cindy Hilbert. Our office processed 66 real property sale transfers. We worked on four property tax estimates. We verified the sale records for the month. Our office processed the sewer and water re-levees for the town. Our data collector has been working around the Clark, around the Clark, she put, around the clock, I assume she put... Oh, no, Clark's Lane and Milton Turnpike, Apple Blossom and Bill's Lane area. We started getting back our exemption renewals, applications, and processing them. Ulster County Clerk's Office has recently updated their recording and processing system to the IQS data system, and we recently attended a training session on the new software. We started collecting our new construction and verifying our splits and merges. And that's from Cindy Hilbert.
Sounds good.
Planning Board, October 2018. First meeting was October 1st, 2018. Attended by Chris Brand, Manny Couchy, Cindy Lanzetta, and Joel Faro, Ben Trapani. Agenda, Paul Gladman, 107 South Street, Marlboro, public hearing lot line. Public hearing for this project was open and closed with limited public participation. A seeker negative deck and notice of determination on nonsignificance was approved via resolution. Resolution of conditional approval was also granted. Second item was Marlboro and Hudson Hudson Circle, Marlboro Public Hearing Site Plan. The public hearing was reopened and closed. The engineers for the town and the project reported runoff reported by neighboring landowners was caused by the applicant's parcel after completing a site visitation. Other issues raised by the public included the tax assessment of condominiums, New York State Attorney General filings, and third-party rentals. Board member Lanzetta questioned the timing and expecting completion of the proposed clubhouse and pool. Chairman Brand asked about construction phasing for the project. The applicants will reappear on October 15th, 2018. Third item was Arapaho Trail, Marlboro. Discussion without attorney, engineer, and or stenographer. The applicant had questions regarding converting his seasonal bungalows into homes. He was advised to speak with the town code enforcement officer regarding necessary repairs required to bring the homes into compliance. Next meeting was held on October 15th, 2018, 7:30 PM at the Town Hall. Attendees were Brand, Couchy, Clark, Laferro, Trapani, and Trunkali. Agenda, first was Marlboro and Hudson Hudson Circle, Marlboro Preliminary Site Plan. An amended seeker negative deck and notice of determination on nonsignificance was approved via resolution. Reapproval of a special permit, site plan approval initially issued March 7th, 2005, was also granted. Second item was Milton Turnpike Solar Farm, 132 Milton Turnpike Sketch Site Plan. The applicant's representatives proposed plans to construct a 2.6 megawatt direct current solar energy farm on the 87.8 acre site. Farm would use a ground-mounted photovoltaic take system. The project site is currently located within R1 Zone, but is subject to zone change, subject to review and approval by the Marlboro Town Board. This zone change must be completed prior to any final action by the planning board. The project will require approvals from Ulster County DPW and review by the Ulster County Planning Board. The applicant was requested to confer with the jurisdictional fire department and code enforcement officer, which requires the proposed 15-foot wide access drive. New York State Fire codes require 20 feet. The applicant submitted a lengthy stormwater pollution plan to the identified 12.9 plus or minus acres of disturbance, which is currently under review by the town engineer. Town engineer Pat Hines also requested additional information regarding the decompaction of the lay-down areas if stumps are not to be removed. Details of interconnection with utilities and clarification of various other technical issues found in the application. The town may wish to identify to the operator that a pilot agreement will be required, and attorney Ron Blast should provide input thereon. The applicants will return for the second meeting in November. The next item on the agenda was Ridge Road, Marlboro Preliminary Site Plan. The applicant reappeared and presented design plans to incorporate the original approved stormwater management facilities located on proposed lots one and two. The applicant was requested to evaluate a direct connection to the existing culvert crossing Ridge Road to minimize discharge of stormwater. An easement for operation and maintenance of the stormwater facilities on both lots in favor of the town of Marlboro was requested. Review of water surface connections by the town of Marlboro Water Department should be received. Approval for proposed subsurface sanitary sewer disposal systems are required by the Ulster County Health Department. This project is subject to the terms and conditions of the Drainage District during the original subdivision approval, portions of which are not constructed. The board requested further clarification of ongoing questions regarding the percentages. Each lot would contribute to this water district upon completion. The applicant will return for the November 5th meeting. And that was it. Respectfully submitted, Chris Brand, Chairman, Town of Marlboro Planning Board.
Thank you, Howard.
Yep.
Okay, moving right along, we're going to the report of the committees. The first one is Recreation Committee. As I suggested or made everybody know, that we had the trunk or treat that was very successful. Anybody else? Alan, you want to talk about the Wednesday...
Parade?
Parade?
Yeah, we did our, hosted our annual Halloween parade for the children. We started the library and ended the firehouse. Ladies Auxiliary provides refreshments and candy and games for the kids. We had a move, we had a plan for Saturday, which makes it easier for the parents, you know, with the school bus times, like my daughter, for instance, doesn't get off the school bus till four o'clock, you know, and for parents to be home, get the kids dressed and fed, and then down to go trick or treating. But this year, it actually seemed to work out very well. We caught some really nice weather. Probably had close to 100 people there, I'd imagine. And everybody, you know, came, and the people that, you know, have businesses along Main Street actually provided some extra candy for the kids. It was all smiles and everybody was out trick or treating by 5:30. So it was really, really a success. So I'd like to thank the police department, as always, for sending a couple patrol units down there to help with traffic control, and Ladies Auxiliary and my fellow firemen did a great job.
You know, my grandchildren, I know Vinnie just was amazed with Freddie.
Yeah, the kids just love Freddie, so. It was the best investment, one of the best investments we ever made.
They didn't want to leave Freddie.
Yeah, he's a good tool for fire prevention week. He really, the kids listen to him, believe it or not, so he does a good job, so.
Okay, anything on the emergency management preparedness, Alan?
It's pretty status quo at this point.
Conservation Advisory Committee, we made a decision that we would meet in January. Everything that we've been working on with Matt Kirsten is up at the Ulster County Planning that's design guidelines for the 9W corridor. So there's a lot of work there, and hopefully Robert will get that back to us. IT Committee, I think you see the new TV screens. The board has new Chrome computers, and hopefully we'll get everything arranged where everything with the reports will be up there so everybody could see it. So I guess we're in the 21st century now, so it's all good. And actually, Scott, right, we budgeted for this, so. Milton Train Station Foundation, the president is here. How you doing, Sharon? Come on up. Nice to see you. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, I'm Sherm Citron. I'm the new president of the Milton Train Station Foundation. This is my first visit here. I will present only the most recent stuff, and if there are questions, historical questions, you know, obviously I'll take them. The first thing I'll do, though, is talk about something that I saw at the train station. I sometimes go down to the river to kind of hang out and read, and I saw a well-turned-out woman driving, I believe a Lexus, accompanying a much younger couple. And it looked to me very much like it was a real estate broker showing off the train station and walking them over to the site map, which is kind of nice, which is kind of a nice, kind of a nice benefit. Two things. Thing number one, you already reported on it, the paving. Cindy, on November 5th, sent a note out to the board proposing that the foundation pay the $4,800 that the particular engineering firm that she contacted will charge to do the engineering work, and the votes were unanimous to approve it, so that that's going to happen. There may be more to it, because Cindy has asked that the matter be put on the board agenda for next Tuesday. The other thing that I'll report on briefly is the reception that we held on October 20th for donors and for board members, mostly for donors. It was very nice, it went very well. The cost to the board was, the cost to the foundation was modest, it was less than $600. Unfortunately, Senator Larkin was not there, would have liked to have seen him. And that's pretty much all I have.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions?
No?
Nope.
We didn't get any flooding in the basement, did we, with these storms? Sherm?
Yeah?
No more flooding in the basement with these past storms?
I didn't see any.
Did we get any flooding?
I, the last time I looked was a couple of weeks ago, no. But actually, I probably should have looked again.
It's fun.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherm.
Thank you, sir.
Marlboro Economic Development Committee, do you have anything on that, Howard?
Mr. Milton Land.
Oh, did I miss one?
Milton Landing.
Milton Landing, I'm sorry. Milton Landing Citizens Committee.
Yeah, as I reported before, the crossings completely ripped out now, but they are in a state of full replacement of those railroad ties. They have to do both the west track and the east track. I believe they got it locked down on the east track. The rails were all replaced over the summer, so now I'm just, you know, I drive down there every day to have coffee and lunch. So I keep, you know, I'm just keeping an eye on them. They are moving ahead, they're doing, they laid railroad ties all the way up past Highland, so at least they're in our section now. It does look like there's a pile of railroad ties...
It does look like there's a pile of railroad ties that are designated ties that would be designated to a crossing. So it looks like, hopefully, they will make an attempt to actually put at least the old crossing in there. And then we'll keep working to move ahead with the improved one, but we need to hopefully get the old one, the old way across back in before next season. So as the season's, for the most part, over, so that's about it.
Thank you, Alan.
Just, just a reminder.
We got more dirt coming for the upper.
Yeah, what was the dirt? Highlight that, Alan, what was the dirt?
Oh, yeah.
Update.
It's, it's just, no, it's just as we know that it's, this is all coming from that site down there, and it's as it gets released, are they all designated piles, is what it's called? So there's just another release, and every time there's a release, JP will just text me or call me and be like, hey.
I haven't seen it.
Yeah.
I went there today.
It's gonna start, you know what I mean? And again, it's not up to him, it's up to them, but they gave him the hey.
I'm just anticipating.
So, you know what I mean? And I usually let a couple of the property owners on the road know, you're gonna see some increased truck, truck traffic, but they're getting used to it, and they know it's kind of sporadic, you know what I mean? So, but it's gonna be five to six hundred yards, so it should make a pretty good impact.
That's good.
Well, and just a reminder, that's great, and December is right around the corner, and that's when we should hear about the three grants we have pending for the upper, the lower, and the Milton Pier. Keep our fingers crossed for something. I see Rosemary out there, I know she prays every night. So let's hope something comes through there.
Crossed.
Yep.
I just want to say that, see if they, no, just what, just I'm not, yeah, I can see them working from my house, I can hear them, and I can see them from my porch, but after tonight, they're all online, working on the tree.
They worked all weekend, so they're working twenty-four-seven at this point. Like I said, they're going all the way up past Highland, so it's a total tie replacement.
Anything on Meet Me in Marlborough?
Meet Me in Marlborough? Well, you can talk about the Farmeret, I don't know if the Farmeret Building, there's still quite a bit of activity regarding, I don't know if it's related to Meet Me in Marlborough, but it somewhat is.
I think the last thing is Chris Brand saying they were trying to get people together, and maybe we'll meet Tuesday. I just briefly looked at his email, so I'll pass that along if you're interested.
He has a Facebook site page up regarding it and the project, asking for volunteers and money, of course, but, so, we don't know, do we know anything about the progress of Bayside? Anything going on there?
Yeah, so one of the things is that one of the conditions for him to move forward is this building that we're talking about. So I believe this week he has advertisement saying that anybody that wants to either come and get it for free, or, you know, that it's available, just to meet his conditions, because that's what it states, that you have to advertise. And he hasn't done that, but he said he was gonna, he was gonna do that this week. So that means the clock is ticking, and, you know, we'll see what happens. It's a huge building, it's a huge undertaking. And when we went out there, Howard, you know that not only is the building huge, but if you're gonna have twenty people on somebody's property, they all have to have insurance. So that's another thing that they have to think about.
Yep.
I mean, we could waive the demolition of the, of the building, but we can't, we can't have people going on Mr. Sessman's property without insurance.
I am sure they're all aware of that, so.
Yeah. So I haven't heard any moving on that, but I'll check with Chris and see what's going on.
Yeah. Are we still?
If he advertises that building to come get someone, it's gonna come.
I thought he was gonna start construction.
He was supposed to start clearing.
Yeah, and that, that's. That's, well.
But you can't do that till this gets cleared up.
That's one of the things of his condition, you know? He has to take care of a few things, and that's one of them.
That's one of them, plus other, I know there's some other.
And his content is planning board approval, right?
Yeah.
And this is one of them.
Right. Plus some other issues I'm aware of, yeah.
Yep.
Anything on the Ham, oh, we did the Hamlet Milton Association Committee.
No, I didn't land.
No, he didn't, did the landing.
Yeah, the Christmas tree lighting is gonna be December second. I believe they're holding it at two o'clock. So that's gonna be Vivian and Stephanie, as usual, doing that. The fire department will be involved. We, fire department got ahold of Santa, he is available, so he'll be deriving at the firehouse at about one, well, about two o'clock. We'll probably be arriving in front of the tree around two-thirty.
That's a Sunday, huh?
Second?
December second, yeah. So, but he's gotta leave by like.
Does one say any close calls?
He said he's available, yeah, he was there last year, he's pretty good to us. It's busy, the time of the year, but he always leaves a little spot open for us.
He's a great guy.
Yeah, nice guy.
Al, you skipped the Marlborough Hamlet Economic Development Committee, or maybe I was.
Marlborough Hamlet Economic, no, I asked you, and then we went astray.
Oh, we went, I thought it was Meet Me in Marlborough, but anyway, that, they are going to have a meeting on the twentieth, I think, of November at seven PM at John's office, I believe, John DeMarco's office.
Okay.
And, you know, we are, we are still talking about the parking lot, so there's some conversations underway.
You know, if it's, maybe if it's a nice weekend, we should look at that road that goes in between the parking lot on the south side and Christ Church property.
Yes, since you brought that up, I have looked at it. So with Al's talking about, there would be a potential access point to the Tilcon property that's being leased to us that wouldn't require use of the parking lot. So it would need work, but not, it's not unmanageable, we, I'm sure we could make it workable, so.
But if we use that access point, we still have to build some kind of parking somewhere on Tilcon's property further down?
Yes, it would be, that access point is Tilcon's property, I believe, and there's three big boulders blocking it now, but I think you could remove those and with the help of some heavy equipment operators, we could, you could make a parking spot down there, I think. That's something that we have to look at. And that would allow us.
Yeah, they haven't shut the door on parking up there for a couple of people that want to use the trail.
Right, they haven't shut the door, but they haven't opened it too much either.
They're not opening it, are they?
We'll see what happens.
So let's, we could go to Transfer Station Review Committee?
Transfer Station Review, nothing really out there except the Nexamp project potential.
Okay, so old business, we know that Tom Vak is up for referendum, and that's on December the fourth, from twelve to nine, at the two polling places, St. Mary's and the town hall here. Anybody like to add anything else? I guess that's it. I think cards are gonna go out to remind people pretty soon. Design standards for the.
Sorry. Sherm was saying goodbye.
Goodbye, Sherm.
So long.
So we talked about the design standards. The LWRP is wrapping up. I think John and Barbara Kendall have wrapped that up, we're waiting for the last payment. Route nine W corridor study is finished. Sent that link to everybody to review that.
So there, you guys, you guys could attend the conference call, I would, I would assume on the fifteenth, if you wanted to. Do you all have the information about that? Okay, backing up, Al, to the LWRP, I just want to remind everybody, and I'll get some more information on this. The Cornell students are coming back on December first for the, and give us the results of their scenic resource inventory, so I'll get some information out of it. Got the train station reserved again.
Okay.
Yep.
Sounds good. Thank you for doing that.
Yep.
I don't, I think we're all done with our zoning changes. I mean, does anybody have any, could we take that off now?
Yeah, make a motion, remove E.
What?
On Milton Turnpike, so.
We have, we did that already.
Yeah, we got another one, maybe.
Maybe, well, not now. Not now, but we will hopefully.
Okay.
I hope.
Well, we could bring that. You want to keep it on there, or you want to take it?
No, no, we should take it off.
We can take it off.
We made a motion to take it off.
I made the motion.
Need a second? Ed seconded it? One favor?
Aye.
And that thing too may affect F, so we'll keep F on there, but.
So we removed E's, zoning changes, right?
Right.
Right.
Water district improvement, well, Charlie's not here, so.
He's working on it, I think he's talking.
Everybody saw in new business, the state controller report of examination.
Yep.
Yep.
So we're working on it, Chris is working on it. That's because, you see those emails, every time Tina has to do something with the water building, she sends all the board members.
Yep.
The whole list of things, what she had to do to rectify whatever problem it might be.
I mean, actually, if we had, overall, I think it was a pretty good report.
Yeah, it was on the sewer.
Yeah.
And they made a mistake, they said sewer and water, but it's just on the sewer overcharge.
Yeah.
Yep, it's fine.
But I mean, I think it was a pretty good report overall, that's good for the, knowing we're doing mostly all the right things.
Yeah. Well, nobody's going to jail.
No, that's for sure.
Well, maybe you.
Me neither.
Make a big bucks.
So I have a motion to advertise for open positions on, I need a motion.
I'll make that.
For planning board, zoning board, and ethics board.
I make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Who's up, who's up for what? Can you tell us?
Ah, geez.
Their terms are up.
I think planning board is Steve Clark. I forget who's zoning board is, but, and then ethics board, there's a couple because of the death of Dave Blue, so.
And you have one, we already have that thing, it's always the hardest one to get to.
Thankfully, we haven't needed it.
Thank God.
We're getting there.
What, that we're gonna need it?
Excuse me?
No, no, no. I said thankfully, we haven't needed it, and you said you're getting there.
Let's not take it. See, and I came here.
So.
Did we have the motions?
Correspondence.
Yes. It's time you were to get too many, good evening.
Alan, did we, did we have the, Alan, did we have the motion for the positions?
I seconded it.
I motioned, I seconded.
I said that we approved, he said, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So I just want to make sure she hears.
Okay.
You know, what she can ask us.
So, going along to correspondence here. First of all, from the gentleman that's building the pods, heading south, the forty-thousand square foot pod.
Pods.
He saw the drawings of the playground that we're proposing, and he said he wanted to do something. So he wrote out a check for a donation for the inclusive playground for twenty-five-hundred dollars.
All right.
And according to New York State Town Law, section sixty-four, power of town board number eight, we may accept gifts for public use. And so I need a motion to accept this generous gift from West Rack Construction Corporation.
I'll make that motion with my thank you.
Need a second?
I'll second it.
One favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Pleasure.
That's pretty generous.
Very nice of him.
I got a letter here from the chief, from Michael Rizzo. I'm writing this letter to formally advise you, due to a scheduled conflict, I'm resigning from my position as town of Marlborough Police Officer, effective November fifth, two thousand eighteen. I would like to thank you for the experience and opportunity to work here for you and the town of Marlborough Police. And that's Michael Rizzo.
Mike Rizzo's leaving now?
He's been for a couple of years, at least.
Yeah, he's been around for a while.
He, he, yeah, he's.
Yep.
It's a mutual agreement. So as I stated on that timber offer, I didn't want to go through the, the whole thing of alienation with the park at Clot Chance, so I asked for just a bid on the reservoir and the landfill, and it came to around thirty-eight thousand dollars. I asked if we could do a little bit better, he said, right now, because of the tariffs and stuff like that, maybe back, approach him in February. So I think, we're in no hurry, so we could probably wait a couple months to do that. It's gonna be there.
By the way, speaking of the reservoir, I don't know if you guys ever have been up there lately, it's, it's a beautiful spot.
It is.
It's fantastic.
Nice to fish.
Quite a few acres up there, too, and people walk down, they take care of it.
We walk around with kids and a lot of people up there, it's beautiful.
A lot of nice fishing here, too.
Yeah, large mouth bass and stuff. And I don't.
And unfortunately, we did not get the tree grant.
Right.
Rosemary worked so hard on this, too, but we'll see what happens.
We're gonna have a follow-up call with them and see why we didn't get it, but we'll report back on that.
She worked with John Beham and Cynthia, and they really worked hard on it. They applied for it last year, and there was something wrong, and then this year they were really careful and dotted all their eyes, and sometimes these things are very disappointing.
Do they give you a reason, or they don't?
They don't give you a reason, but then you could request a meeting with them, and they could tell you why they didn't.
Which we're gonna do, we requested that, so we're gonna.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
It's unfortunate.
Public comments, this is the time when you have.
Circle? I know, like this.
Tim, would you like to come up, please?
When you hit this guy here. We gotta hold it together, that way it's. We be talking to the world.
Tim Lawton, citizen tonight. But I will say thank you very much to the board and to the town for support of the library referendum. We are very, very happy. The library should be solvent now through about twenty-twenty into twenty-twenty-one, so we'll see what happens at that point. My real comment is, don't forget the, I think it's sponsored by Meet Me in Marlborough, the Holiday Bazaar, on this coming Saturday at the school, the middle school, elementary school cafeteria.
Yep.
Because when you were talking about Meet Me in Marlborough, that wasn't brought up.
No. Are you a member of Meet Me in Marlborough?
No.
We need somebody that would either submit, and we talked about this before, submit a report or come here and give us a report, because.
We don't know.
We don't know what's going on, always.
Let me think on that.
Okay.
That's, that's a challenge, Howard.
Thank you, Tim. Yeah, we're very pleased that the referendum passed, though.
Jim, we're gonna start a collection for a new pair of pants for you. You can peek hole in them.
Working hard. That's in, though. I just wanted to say that having seen the trunk-or-treat, that was, I think, one of the most successful since the very beginning, and I think it was a very good idea putting it further in the back. I think that worked out much, much better as far as the parking goes, so I certainly encourage that to occur the next time. I wanted to ask whether Bayside indicated where they were going to be advertising.
They said the local paper, I think that's, you know, what they had to do as far as to meet their conditional, or the record or something like that, Southern Ulster Times.
Okay, they didn't indicate specifically?
No.
No, okay. And the other thing that I would like to say is, I'm very glad to see that the town is improving the employee handbook. I know this came out, dealing with harassment statewide for almost all businesses and government, so I'm glad to see that you're doing that. Thank you very much.
Well, it's one of those unfunded mandates, it's a good thing, but we had to hire a lawyer and get it done.
Well, they, they put, they put some good models online and information on how to do it, and I think that that's important in getting these things done.
Yep. So, we'll follow through with that. We have to the end of 2019, and so because of logistics with the police, we can't have somebody come in and actually teach it, because of this shifts and stuff like that, we'll lose too much money. So we're looking into videos and timeframes and stuff like that, so everybody could, you know, we could complete the requests from the New York State on sexual harassment.
I think it's available online.
We have code.
There isn't online.
I'm not code, but we have stuff that goes, yeah, there's stuff, videos online now.
Yeah, like you can get your phone.
But we're looking at, you know, to see which one is the best one, that suits everything. I'm working with the chief on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ralph? No.
Whoa, get it, Ralph? Easy. Why is Ralph sitting in the blue chairs? I don't even go in the red.
Couple of comments, questions, requests. State Controller's report, is it available for review by the citizens?
Sure.
And who has it?
Clerk, I'll have it.
The clerk, or the bookkeeper?
Clerk, I'll make sure the clerk has.
All right.
Actually, you could go on the website.
I think it's on the website.
It's on the website.
It's much easier to read the hard copy.
You could go, you save a couple pennies for the town taxpayers.
Print it out.
What do you mean, save any money?
No, you go right to your computers, right here, the letter and everything.
That's enough.
All right, I'll give it to you.
Resolution.
I'll give it to you tonight.
Huh?
I'll give it to you tonight.
Give it to me?
Yeah, I got the report.
Oh, I don't want it tonight.
Okay.
I'll come up one day during the week and look at it.
Difficult.
They'll have a print for you.
I basically wanna see their management letter that comes with it, so. Resolution 81 to adopt the budget for 19. I didn't see a copy of the resolu, of the budget that's gonna be adopted. Will that be also?
Final budget?
Yep.
Well, the primary becomes the final.
Yeah, but you were gonna make some changes, including inserting.
I have it right here, I'll give it to you.
Some appropriated fund balances and stuff like that. It's not here tonight, I'll get it from you one day.
I have it right here.
All right.
The only thing that changed is that Gail Apple, the highway superintendent, met with the budget director. 200,000 of his fund balance is going for a purchase of a truck, and 200,000 is earmarked for loop paving.
So we.
He's thinking 400,000, so it doesn't change anything in the budget.
So we increased two lines in this highway budget, 200,000 for equipment, 200,000 for contractual expense, and we put 400,000 into appropriated fund balance.
What did you say?
Did we appropriate any additional fund balance in the general fund? You had 75,000.
No, more than that. No, just 75,000.
Okay. And, and seeing your new TV screens, my only suggestion is, from this side of the room, that's the one that has to be looked at, you gotta make the print bigger.
Okay.
It's not up there now, but the slides.
Well, this is all new to us, so, you know.
The slides, but work on making it bigger.
Okay.
You can sit closer. You can sit over here.
I don't like that side of the room.
You don't like that side of the room? It's gotta be in a certain spot.
He likes his spot over there.
You're on the left, left of the pool.
He's right handed.
Well, that's really small, right there.
Sure.
That is small. But I mean, when, when someone comes in, you just gotta maximize the, um.
Yeah, they can maximize.
When you bring it up, just like here, when you have, we have our Chromebooks, you can maximize it.
Meeting night comes in April, whether it be this or school board meeting, that Yankee game you showed on the screen.
No problem. Well, it is gonna, does have.
As long as I can watch Monday Night Football, I'll honor that request.
We can have your stuff on this one, but the game on that.
Well, it's gonna be nice, too, because the planning board's also gonna use it, so it's gonna be good for them when they bring in, bring their stuff, so.
And as long as you're talking about the screen, why don't you take the private computer